All right. Good morning, everyone. This is the meeting of the Baltimore City Council Public Health and Environment Committee. It's now called to order. I am Councilwoman Felicia Porter, representing the 10th District and Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have members of the committee. We have Councilman Mark Conway. The two Marks are sitting together. Mark Conway in District Four. We also have Councilman Mark Parker from District One. We also have Council President Zeke Cohen joining us today. Thank you, sir. And then we also have Councilwoman Ramos from District 14.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before we get started, please take a moment to turn off or silence your cell phones. And today, the committee is holding a hearing on legislative oversight related to zero waste. This is an opportunity for us in the city to assess the city of Baltimore's progress toward achieving its zero-waste goals as outlined in the Baltimore Sustainability Plan, examining the effectiveness of current waste reduction, recycling, and composting programs, evaluating challenges in implementation and enforcement, and exploring opportunities for improvement and investment in sustainable waste management infrastructure. Mr. President, before we get started, do you want to provide some remarks?
I will be extremely brief. Appreciate, Madam Chair, holding this hearing. We know that, as a city, we have still a long way to go in our zero-waste goals, and they're mission-critical for Baltimore to continue to thrive. We know that climate change is real, despite some folks that do not seem to know that, and that it's incumbent on us to do everything within our power. And I know there's been a ton of good work in South Baltimore around compost and some of the community gardening. I know there's been some really good work up in North Baltimore as well. I think, as a city, tightening up a little bit around programmatically, what are we doing, I think is really important, and that we are investing in the different efforts that exist within some of our districts, that we are really holding those up. And the last thing I will say is, having just gone on a shift with the sanitation workers that was supposed to be recycling, it was not all recycling. In fact, it was a good bit of mixed refuse. And now, to be fair, we were in Jonestown, Little Italy, where there's a lot of restaurants. And, you know, I get it. But I think it's important that, as a city, we are consistently messaging the importance of actually doing the recycling program versus the trash program, and that folks know that their recycling will actually go into recycling and not just be dumped in a landfill. And so I think we have some work to do on that front as well for the public. But again, really appreciate, Madam Chair, holding this hearing. I think it's just a critically important conversation for us to continue to have as a city. And I would love to see that this be the term where we turn the corner from having like a lot of really good projects and different initiatives in different districts to a more systems-level approach. And I know that's where we're going to get within this committee and within the administration. So again, appreciate everybody for being here today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I also just want to echo what you just described, and I want to reframe it a little bit. Being the person, being the council member on the Office of Sustainability, I understand the work that not only this council is doing under your leadership, but also within the administration. And I really want to take an opportunity to delve into this work so that folks really understand what we are supposed to be doing. But I also want to just challenge us. Behavior change in any type of health outcome is very, very difficult. It is not something that it is impossible, but it is something that takes concerted effort. It takes coordination amongst the legislative body and the executive branch in the community. But it also takes an understanding that it has to be capacity. It has to be funding. It has to be a willingness and political will amongst colleagues and administration alike at the local, state, and federal level. And so I'm happy that we are having this hearing today, given that we've had some difficult challenges at the federal level. I really believe that the localities and the state level are really going to shine and be able to shine in some of these instances related to a lot of the issues that we're dealing with, primarily health and environment, which we are missioned and purpose for this committee to solve. So I look forward to the continued conversations. This is one of many. You all know that I eat, sleep, and breathe public health, and I know many of my colleagues on this committee do as well. And so we are here as a partner with you all, in hand in hand with you all, to delve into these issues, to have a good incremental resolution of these issues. And I say that it's not going to be solved overnight. It's going to be incrementally. And then also that we can reimagine the future for more sustainable Baltimore, not just from a place of, oh, we're just, you know, picking up trash or a trash-bag ban. I really want us to have an opportunity to make some substantial changes as we move forward in Baltimore. So I will stop there. I'm going to open the floor. No, not yet. I'm going to go to agency reports. We have a few presentations for the public's knowledge. We have a few presentations from a few key agencies that I wanted to share today. And so we're going to start with the Department of Planning. My classmate, Ava Richardson, from the Morgan State University. Ma'am, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman Porter and Vice Chair Conway, as well as all of the members of the Public Health and Environment Committee. My name is Ava Richardson. I direct Baltimore City's Office of Sustainability. And I really want to thank you, Councilwoman Porter, for your leadership on this issue and really appreciate the opportunity to kind of, as you said, delve into the issue. And we share such an immense passion for public health and know that public health is in everything that we do, especially our waste management systems across the city. So on the first slide, which I'll zip through pretty quickly. And can I control the slides? Or... Okay. And you can go to the next slide really quickly. This is just an overview of our work, just as a reminder to the council and the committee and for the members of the public. Our work focuses on catalyzing climate action, educating, engaging, and collaborating. I'm so glad to hear Chairwoman Porter mention promoting behavior change, because we know so many of our climate actions across the city really require positive climate behavior change. And then we track and report. We release an annual sustainability report, which I'll talk more about. But we also do voluntary reporting that compares us among other cities supporting climate and sustainability work. On the next slide here, you'll see that we talk about a little bit of the language around zero waste. And I really appreciated the council president's comments when you talked about some of the things that we really need to be addressing more strategically. And I apologize for the small text on this slide, but I believe that all of the committee members do have this information. But wanted to anchor us to some common language. When we talk about carbon neutrality, we're talking about the reductions of emissions, and that's so important to our zero-waste goals because we want to decarbonize and really move the emissions from our waste management practices across the city. I think, Council President, you spoke beautifully to a circular economy, which is what we're really trying to achieve when we talk about zero waste. So we really want to eliminate the concept of waste. But that requires a lot of strategies and approaches which help to design waste out of our system, from extended producer responsibility to stewardship laws, as well as supporting reuse and other climate behavior change. Climate equity frames all of the work in our office. And I wanted to talk a little bit or define food rescue. When we think about one of the pieces or the materials that are kind of like the lowest-hanging fruit for us to start diverting waste, it really is our organics, both yard waste, but in particular, food waste. And that requires prevention approaches. It requires approaches to redistribute edible foods, as well as composting and other ways to deal with organic material at the end of its edible life. I think we all appreciate greenhouse gas emissions. Those are the molecules that warm the planet, which are a little bit different from the air pollutants that we typically, you know, are a public health concern, but wanted to make sure we got that language there. And then zero waste. So when we talk about zero waste, we're specifically aiming to redesign our waste system such that 90% of our waste is diverted from landfill incineration. So on the next slide, I provide a timeline of the kind of past 10 years of zero-waste planning across Baltimore City. In 2016, the office supported the creation of Camp Small. During that time, we were also implementing, before my time, but implementing on a Waste to Wealth Initiative that focused on food waste reduction, diverting bricks and other deconstruction waste from our waste stream, and then again, creating what is really a nationally-renowned wood reuse center in the city called Camp Small. From there, we went on to receive funding to support a two-year deep dive on food waste. That is how Sophia and myself came to the city, working on that work, supporting more than $800,000 of investment in food waste across multiple years. In 2019, we released our new sustainability plan that had new waste and recycling goals, which I'll walk through. And then in 2020, the Less Waste Better Baltimore Plan was released. In 2021, the Plastic Bag or the Comprehensive Bag Reduction Act was passed, and that has led to a tremendous reduction in post-consumer waste. Based on our data, roughly 60 million bags being diverted from our waste system. In 2022, the city's first-ever zero-waste manager was hired to focus on this work more intensely. And in 2023, a $4-million EPA grant was awarded or announced to support the creation of a solar-powered compost facility. And over the past couple of years, we've been updating climate-related plans in the office, including our Disaster Preparedness Plan and our Climate Action Plan, which have specific waste goals as well, and also outline a vision for zero waste in a circular economy. On the next slide, I'll just talk about multi-plan management and jump right into the Sustainability Plan. And so our 2019 Sustainability Plan, if you go to the next slide and the one after that, has kind of three chapters that touch on waste to some extent. That includes environmental literacy, waste and recycling, and clean air. Clean air is so important for our waste management system again because when we think about the waste incinerator in the city and what that contributes to air quality and emissions, it's a huge intersection there. But I'm going to focus primarily on the measures in our Waste and Recycling Chapter of the Sustainability Plan to give you all a good sense of what that looks like. Before I get into that, on the next slide, I want to go into our kind of how we measure progress on the Sustainability Plan to make sure we're all anchored to that understanding. The plan itself has 23 topics, 78 measures, 70 strategies, and 244 actions. We measure progress annually on a five-point scale. So on the next slide, I show that scale. Each action, each of those 244 actions are measured in terms of still pending, early stages, mid-stages, advanced stages, and implemented and ongoing. To date, we have seen 92% of those actions advance to early stages or beyond, and 71% of those actions advance to mid-stages. Roughly 11% or about 27 actions have advanced to implemented and ongoing. Chairwoman Porter, you mentioned incremental progress, and this is the real reflection of that. We know that year over year, we will see certain advances with certain actions, and we try to measure that as best as we can and feel that this model provides us a really good framework for understanding how we're making progress on those actions. Now, across our Sustainability Plan, Climate Action Plan, and Disaster Preparedness Plan, along with the Solid Waste Management Plan that DPW recently released, there are over 600 climate actions or related actions that we have outlined, which again, really get at the specifics and the detail and minutia in terms of how we're achieving that vision for zero waste in a circular economy. On the next slide, I go into some of the annual sustainability reporting just to give you a sense. And you can go to the next slide of kind of where we are with our, again, how things are broken down. Typically, in our annual reports, we provide updates on chapters and actions that have significantly advanced. And so if we didn't see a particular level or degree of progress, we don't include that information in the plan often. But I really have to commend my colleagues in the Department of Public Works because every year, we always have an update as it relates to waste and recycling and those actions because of their really proactive and tremendous work and progress they've made over the past several years. So on the next slide, I just outline for the awareness of the committee our performance measures for the Office of Sustainability Service 765 and some of the other ways that we're measured in terms of progress. That includes our outreach and engagement numbers. It also includes engaging the city agency staff with enhancing climate literacy, so different climate and related trainings for the staff. And then we measure progress, again, on that five-point scale for the 244 actions in the Sustainability Plan and the roughly 80 actions in the Climate Action Plan. We also have a measure for our Food Policy and Planning Division, which refers to their Healthy Food Priority area of funding. So on the next slide, I want to get into the strategies that we have in the Waste and Recycling Chapter for the Sustainability Plan. Those include increasing the amount of trash that is diverted from the landfill, expanding Baltimore's Waste to Wealth Initiative, and pursuing legislative and policy changes to reduce the waste stream. We have four particular measures that we, at the time of the release of the plan, we thought were really good measures to look at. Tons of waste, the trash-well volume, businesses supporting waste reduction in recycling rates. I think as time has moved on, we've learned kind of like some of these, some measures that are really helpful and insightful and other measures that may need to be clarified or new measures that we may need to be looking at. So on the next slide, I outline some of the actions in the Sustainability Plan in our Waste and Recycling Chapter that range from providing free recycling bins, creating and implementing a zero-waste plan, supporting a goal to reduce food waste across the city by 50%, setting a local compost facility, enacting legislation for plastic bags, or a plastic bag ban, excuse me, creating a government kind of like Sustainable Procurement Committee, incentivizing a reduction in household garbage and waste, and supporting reuse businesses. On the next slide, I provide progress for each of these actions, which include the 170,000 recycling bins that DPW distributed. Again, supporting and kind of like the hiring of a zero-waste manager and the waste diversion team in DPW. The $800-plus thousand that was invested to support food waste reduction and has continued to. Some of those initiatives we launched under that, that we piloted are continuing today, such as food scrap collection, the EPA grant, supporting a solar-powered compost facility, the diversion of bags from our waste stream, also creating a waste working group under our Sustainability and Resiliency Sub-Cabinet. And annually, the office achieves a 70,000-plus unique interactions and engagements. And then also Camp Small with its diversion numbers. The last reported number that I have for them, diverting 9,000 tons of downed trees. These are just some pictures from some of that work, including Camp Small, the food race or the food scrap collection opportunities that we have. We are able to feed, like work with a farmer and feed hogs with one of our food scrap collection programs. We do host them at the downtown in the Waverly Farmers Market, along with the sites that DPW manages. This is a depiction of all of those actions that I just walked through on that five-point scale that I mentioned, with again, the advanced stages to the right of that scale. Oh, and I'm sorry. If you can advance the slides. Sorry, I'm following. Yes, so that was the scale that I was referring to. And we zipped through the pictures there. But yes, thank you very much. And we can go to the next slide and then, yes, right here. So on this slide, I'm transitioning into the Climate Action Plan, which again, is a plan focused on the reduction of emissions. Again, those molecules that warm the planet, the carbon dioxide, the methane, and other greenhouse gases. And so we are kind of, this year, going to be checking our progress towards that 30% reduction target. And then in the next five years, leading up to that 60% reduction target, we are working on a greenhouse gas inventory to assess target on that now. Some of the guiding principles in our Climate Action Plan kind of relate to some of the ethos and the values that were expressed before in terms of incorporating reuse, redesign, but also fostering inter-agency collaboration and centering the work on equity. And you can go to the next slide. And yeah, so these were the guiding principles, and you can go to the next slide. And so here, I'll just walk through some of the actions that we have in our Waste Chapter of the Climate Action Plan, which include introducing citywide composting, enhancing existing organic waste diversion, coordinating food rescue. Again, how we redistribute edible food to feed people, not landfills and incinerators, establishing waste community leaders and promoting a circular economy. We also want to look into establishing sustainable procurement guidelines and protocols, requiring new buildings having like more clear waste requirements set up, as well as collecting data to help reduce pollutants. On the next slide, it provides a status update on these particular actions in the Climate Action Plan. This plan was released and kind of like finalized last year. And again, I apologize if this is hard to see, but we haven't made quite as much progress on these actions since we're kind of like that first year out in terms of implementation. On the next slide, I'll zip through really quickly our Disaster Preparedness Plan, which focuses on climate adaptation, how we are adapting to a changing climate. And on the next slide, this just outlines kind of like the key goals of the plan. Again, centering equitable protection, but also looking at how we make our city more resilient. So on the next slide, I'll walk through just a few of the waste-related actions in this particular plan. And there aren't many, and a lot of it relates to kind of like wastewater systems, but ensuring that we're promoting kind of debris removal from hazardous events, but also developing and adopting ways to support construction waste diversion, as well as establishing protocols for operational security when it comes to wastewater treatment plants. And then I'll close the presentation because I know we had a time limit here with kind of considerations for really strategic and intentional legislative approaches for zero-waste planning and implementation. I mentioned extended producer responsibility. If you were following the Maryland General Assembly, that legislation did pass at the state this year. And I do want to just take this opportunity to highlight that the state plays a tremendous role in how we are achieving our zero-waste goals across the city and across the entire state. They implement the Organics Waste Diversion Law and several other waste or materials management legislation across the city. And we have the benefit and the opportunity to work really closely with them on that. The Extended Producer Responsibility Model really looks at ensuring that that waste that's produced in the private sector is actually paid for in the private sector as opposed to in the public sector where our taxpayers are harboring that cost. That includes things like the Maryland Paint Stewardship Law that Delegate Boyce passed, as well as battery collection and mattress stewardship laws. Some of these laws did come up this year during the General Assembly, and they did not pass. I believe the battery and the mattress stewardship, they did not end up passing. But I wanted to really highlight that as kind of considerations for types of legislation for zero waste in, again, stewardship in a circular economy that we can be considering. There are many types of legislation that look particularly at municipal operations that we can also consider. Always starting kind of like, leading by example and figuring out, you know, what we can do as a city is always helpful. I think the plastic bag ban is like one example of that. But particularly those types of municipal operation laws that support or provide some type of funding through fees or surcharges or enhance reporting requirements in terms of waste reporting for haulers or waste producers. Again, kind of getting at that behavior change piece, the consumer, like in public-targeted legislation, such as the bag bans, incentives for zero waste, or collecting bottles at vending machines. And sometimes that can be a program, sometimes it can be legislation. And then other kind of like framings for some legislation to consider. Again, targeting the specific material. Yard waste is, I think, a material that we can think more strategically about wasted food. The state is making tremendous progress there. But when it comes to food redistribution and food rescue, there may be some more opportunities that we can be exploring there, large-scale events. Thinking about Artscape and AFRAM, how can we incorporate zero-waste practices in some of these large-scale events? And then, again, really want to thank Chairwoman Porter for bringing up behavior change when it comes to thinking about right-to-repair laws, where as consumers, we have access to the information needed to repair certain electronics or other materials, fix it in repair clinics, as well as those mental and physical nudges that, again, get us at that desired climate behavior.
And Ava, real quick, because this is a part of the presentation. If you could just take the last two minutes. This is a part of the presentation where I want colleagues to really focus on because, one, it provides legislative ideas. It provides community engagement ideas. And also, for us that work in the industry, really looking at some of the policies that we're putting forth and how it can enact behavior change. So can you comment on this slide a little bit more and just expand it? Go ahead.
Sure.
Apologies. Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you just define right-to-repair laws?
Yes. Yes, I apologize for that. But yeah, so right-to-repair laws, oftentimes, we may have appliances and electronics in our house where sometimes you can find a YouTube video really easily that someone else posted. But oftentimes, the manufacturers have not released the schematics or the details in terms of how to repair a particular appliance or electronic, which makes it really hard for us as consumers to say we want to, instead of getting a new refrigerator or dryer to fix it. And it kind of can also drive up the cost of that service. And so the right-to-repair laws just require the manufacturers to actually release that information to ensure that consumers can repair if and when that is a possibility for some electronics and appliances. Yep, absolutely. And so just to talk a little bit more about the behavior changes and the nudges. Again, I think the council president spoke to this really well. When we talk about the systemic change that we want to see, when it comes into everything from reuse and how we kind of like rethink and redesign materials. Right now, we have a lot of post-consumer waste that is associated with our food system, as well as with many kind of like retail operations. And so I think when it comes to the legislation that's like the most impactful in that regard, we have the Comprehensive Bag Reduction Act, which provides a really good example of a piece of legislation that creates a revenue source, but also that requires the retailers or the private sector to engage in a particular activity, which is banning the plastic bags. And then it also requires the consumer to engage in a certain activity, which is bringing their own bag. And so kind of that thinking of like how we provide that pronged approach. And in the case of the bag ban, we did give out free reusable bags to residents as much as we could, targeting certain communities where we know more economic challenges may be an issue. And so, but did you have like other specific questions, Chairman, about like some of that policy and legislation and those nudges? Chairwoman, sorry, sorry, sorry.
No, no, no. I was explaining.
I just wanted to make sure I detailed that correctly.
Because I think this is very important. I probably, while all of the information is great, I think this is really where colleagues and where we can have that interaction to actually move the process.
Yeah, absolutely. And we do have certain policy recommendations like in our plans. They may not be specific, like zero-waste policy and recommendations, but I also leave it to my colleagues in DPW to talk more in detail about that. And so I'll finish up really quickly here. And just on the next couple of slides, the next one just mentions our Commission on Sustainability. I want to continue to provide that open invite to all the council members and as well as if you could share among your constituencies. And on the next slide, this week is our first-ever Nature Everywhere Week. I want to thank you, Council President. I believe you'll be attending the event on Saturday. But we're really looking forward to getting people connected to nature this week. There are lots of opportunities to volunteer, plant trees and remove invasive species, all happening in the beautiful Jordan Hill Park. And then we, on the next slide, we will also be hosting our annual Open House on June 28 at the Reimagine Middle Branch, the Middle Branch Fitness Center. So you all should be receiving an invitation about that. We'll be releasing our 2024 Annual Report soon and look forward to sharing that with you. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Ava. That was a great and informative presentation. Colleagues, I just want to just let you know the flow. So as each agency presents, we're going to provide an opportunity, when all the agency presents, to ask questions at the end. So we're next going to go to DPW and Zero Waste. Whoever wants to go first?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the committee, Matt Garbark, Deputy Director for the Department of Public Works, joined by members of the Department of Public Works, Antoine Byrd is our Chief of Disposal Services, Christine Griffin is our Chief of Legislative Affairs, and Sophia Hussain is our Zero Waste Manager. I'm going to ask Sophia to go through our presentation.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Ava. Thank you, council, for having us today. The purpose of our hearing is to discuss progress towards Baltimore City's zero-waste goals as outlined in the Less Waste Better Baltimore Master Plan. I'm Sophia Hussain, the Zero Waste Manager with the Department of Public Works. For today's discussion, we'll focus on what's within the city's direct sphere of control. In other words, the material is directly handled by DPW. The diversion targets set in Less Waste Better Baltimore are largely influenced by four key citywide sustainability planning documents, which Ava discussed in detail. Based on the recommendations from each plan, Less Waste Better Baltimore used six metrics to objectively compare waste reduction and diversion options, namely, reduction in diversion potential, costs, benefits, challenges to implementation, experience, and timeline. Next slide, please. This table shows the diversion tonnages for residential materials in 2017 and 2024. You'll notice that single-stream recycling tonnage was slightly, has dropped slightly, but composting tonnage has significantly increased. The drop you see from the 18% diversion rate in 2017 to the 16% diversion rate in 2024 can be explained by the significant increase we're seeing in disposed tonnage. So in other words, although our diversion tonnages today are high So in other words, although our diversion tonnages today are higher than they were in 2017, the relative amount of waste generated and disposed has increased significantly, leading to a lower residential diversion rate. While Less Waste, Better Baltimore predicts an increase in waste generation over time, we want to point out that the pandemic also played a part in more waste being disposed of in the residential sector, as well as an increase in single-use disposables, an increase in overall consumption.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. If we can take a five-minute recess, we want to make sure, because we have some great data that's displayed on the screen, we're going to take a five-minute recess in order to print these presentations out so that members can actually see it.
Sure.
Hold on one second. So we're in recess for five minutes, everyone.
Sure.
Thank you. We'll now resume the presentation. Sophia, if you can keep going. Thank you.
Great. Yep. So I'll start at the top of this slide again, just so that you guys can follow along. This table shows the diversion tonnages for residential materials in 2017 and 2024. You'll notice that the single-stream recycling tonnage has slightly dropped, but the composting tonnage has significantly increased. The drop you see from the 18% diversion rate in 2017 to the 16% diversion rate in 2024 can be explained by the significant increase we're seeing in disposed tonnage. So in other words, although our diversion tonnages today are higher than they were in 2017, the relative amount of waste generated and disposed has increased significantly, leading to a lower residential diversion rate. While Less Waste, Better Baltimore predicts an increase in waste generation over time, we want to point out that the pandemic also played a part in more waste being disposed of in the residential sector. The pandemic factored in an increase in single-use disposables, an increase in overall consumption, and a focus on cheap and replaceable goods. Next slide, please. DPW currently provides weekly curbside single-stream recycling collection to single-family residents in Baltimore, as well as public housing, some public schools, and small businesses. Less Waste, Better Baltimore recommended improving the existing curbside program by providing free recycling carts with secure covers to residents to increase participation in curbside recycling, a task completed by DPW in 2021. 2024 data shows that DPW sent over 27,000 tons of single-stream recycling to waste management for sorting. This was a 43% increase from 2023 tonnage. According to our 2024 single-stream recycling sort, our contamination rate has increased three percentage points from 17 in 2023 to 20% in 2024 and remains close to the national average. Less Waste, Better Baltimore recommends several approaches to improving single-stream recycling. Most notably, Less Waste, Better Baltimore suggests building several mini-material recovery facilities across the city to develop a network of sorting capacity that would be resilient to mechanical failure or environmental hazards. The report assumes that this could be, it could be a challenge to fund one centralized material recovery facility, but we could be more successful at getting funding for smaller material recovery facilities and expanding that offering over time. Next slide, please. DPW provides recycling services to public schools at no cost, although currently not all schools are taking advantage of the program. We have a 77% participation rate this year. DPW has made several improvements to the program, including creating a defined enrollment process, increasing route efficiency, creating a school recycling service request, and streamlining communications using forms and designated points of contact. DPW works closely with the school district's sustainability staff to manage school signups and coordinate communication. The school sustainability team then communicates all issues, changes, or collection delays to individual schools. Looking forward, we're hoping to enhance efficiency by expanding the use of our routing software to school recycling routes. This will help optimize routes further, reduce fuel usage, manage time and labor, especially as more schools join the program. Our goal is to work with the school staff to establish an annual school recycling training, providing teachers and facility staff with updates on program expectations to build a stronger recycling culture at each school. We also want to encourage the school system to provide classroom-level resources for recycling, a goal outlined in their sustainability plan. This will help solidify the program as a shared responsibility, as well as allow for growth and continuity. Next slide, please. According to Less Waste, Better Baltimore, after single-stream recycling, curbside organics diversion is the next highest opportunity for diversion in the residential sector. We've made strong progress through our composting workshops. In 2024, we held 10 workshops with 74 attendees. Each participant left with a composting guide and a food scrap collection bin. For 2025, we're aiming to have 20 more with, sorry, 10 more with three already on the boats. We've also been able to expand our food scrap drop-off locations thanks to a USDA grant, which allowed us to expand our drop-off locations in partnership with universities. As we look towards the future of organics recycling in Baltimore, we'd like to design a system that builds in stages guided by data, outreach, and behavior change strategies. In 2024, Solid Waste conducted an in-depth analysis of the operational requirements and costs for separating out yard waste collection from trash. And separating out yard waste collection and diverting it to composting would be the first step in a phased approach to organics diversion. An enhancement funding request was submitted to fund the change in operations, but was not granted. Later phases of expansion would include an opt-in food scrap diversion curbside pilot program, as well as expanding organics recycling to schools and city agencies. Next slide, please. Thank you. Less Waste, Better Baltimore also recommends constructing aerated static composting facilities and a secondary transfer station to facilitate large-scale diversion. DPW is in the process of developing this critical infrastructure at Bowley's Lane in a three-phase development. In Phase One, we're planning on developing a Tier One solar-powered composting facility that can accept and process yard waste, renovate the existing administrative and worker facilities, update the residential recycling center, and parking and stormwater systems. In Phase Two, we'll expand the composting facility to a Tier Two facility that can accept food scraps. And in Phase Three, we'll see the development of a full-scale transfer station. DPW is working with a design and engineering firm to complete site plans and conduct community engagement with the finalized designs expected by the end of 2025. Phases One and Two of development are fully funded through a combination of federal grants, state grants, and capital improvement funds. And that concludes our present, oh, sorry, one more slide. The current administration has been significant investments into DPW's curbside collection operations. However, a transition towards zero-waste will require additional funding.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Zero-waste is about habit change. Lasting impact comes from empowering residents to change daily behaviors from reusing materials to composting. By shifting mindsets and routines, we reduce contamination, increase participation, and build a culture of zero-waste. Education, accessibility, and equitable program design are essential if we want full participation across neighborhoods. Consistent education and outreach will play a big role in encouraging these cultural shifts. Many Less Waste, Better Baltimore recommendations for the residential sector call for expanding curbside services and capacity, all of which will also require additional funding for fleet and staffing. Enforcement coordination presents its own challenge. The Department of Housing and Community Development and the Baltimore City Health Department play different roles in solid waste enforcement and hauler management. DPW can work in collaboration with its sister agencies to improve enforcement, but cannot speak to their barriers or capacity. Overall, DPW has seen steady progress towards the targets set in Less Waste, Better Baltimore. With additional resources and prioritization, DPW anticipates that we'll continue to move the needle towards our goals.
Thank you so much. Just, I want to provide the Council President an opportunity to ask his questions before he has to leave.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and apologies, I'm going to have to dip in a few to go to an engineering thing with city schools. So apologies for having to leave early. Really appreciated the really robust presentation, Director Richardson. Just want to understand, I appreciate all the constraints and challenges that we're operating under, appreciate the plan to move forward with recycling and composting facility. One thing I was mentioning to the Chair is, I think there is a perception around Baltimore that we, the city, are not actually recycling or separating mixed refuse trash from recycling. And that is not good because then it creates a self-evident prophecy where people are like, well, if the city's, you know, just going to dump this stuff, why am I bothering? So I am curious from a communication standpoint, like, what are we doing to ensure residents that we are taking it really seriously and that we're not just dumping everything in a landfill? Because I think it's just important to everything you just said for neighbors, communities, people to be bought in and know that when they follow, you know, what we ask them to do in recycling on one day and putting their trash out on a different day, that the city is fulfilling its end of the bargain.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. It's a very good question.
If you could, please state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, I'm Matt Garbark, Deputy Director for Department of Public Works. So we do have a contract with Waste Management. They manage our recycling processing. All of our recycling is taken to our Northwest Transfer Station where it's loaded onto trucks, then taken to Waste Management's processing facility in Elkridge, Maryland. It is processed there mechanically, it's optically sorted, so it's automatically sorted into a number of different areas. We have DPW's Communications Chief up here, who's been working on a number of outreach efforts just about recycling, where it goes and how folks can participate in it. But we do have a contract that is taken to Waste Management, and it is sorted, and they're required to recycle that end product there. So it doesn't go into the landfill unless it is contaminated. If it's contaminated, then it does become mixed refuse that is disposed of. So. Oh, sorry.
Okay. So I just wanted to mention that.
If you could state your name for the record, please.
Sorry, I'm Tiara Brown. I'm the Chief of Marketing Communications at DPW. Okay. So to Matt's point, we've taken our team to kind of go to the Wind Waste Facility so we could take a deeper dive into what is actually happening, to dispel some of the myths of where people's recycling is going. We're working on that video, and we should have it out soon.
I appreciate that. I would maybe make one suggestion, Madam Chair, which is, it might be good to have some council members go there and, under your leadership, and just sort of see it ourselves. I've always been really curious about what it actually looks like. Would love, you know, to potentially do a trip of council members up to Elkridge. Yeah, we like field trips. So I think that's one. Two, I'm really glad that you all went there and that there's some kind of video coming out. Again, I just think figuring out some kind of communications plan to message it is really important because, again, I just think there is like this misperception out there in the public that we just throw everything in a landfill. And it's interesting, I hear it in my neighborhood sometimes, I hear it in west and north and south, like it just, you catch pieces of that no matter where you are in the city. And I think part of any effective public health approach where if it's about getting people to do the recycling is like people need to buy in and believe that we're actually, you know, recycling it. So I would just suggest, one, like I'd love to see it and just kind of like see how that breakdown actually works. And then two is, I do think, just thinking about how we're communicating out publicly because just any of these things, like you all know this, people do not trust government, people do not trust institutions, people do not trust, right? So like consistently messaging and showing folks, like I think the video is a really good idea because like literally showing people, no, we are actually doing it, we're not just dumping all your stuff in a landfill, I think is really important. So again, appreciate, appreciate that. I think this is one of those where like the nudge has to be just a little firmer from us, like it just, you know, folks have to buy in, or they're just not going to do it.
Thank, Mr. President, I couldn't agree more with that. One of the big issues, and Sophia was highlighting it, is just the education awareness and understanding of what this all is, as well as how, where, what, when, we can divert, reuse, you know, reduce our waste that, you know, we use. So couldn't agree more. That has been a real challenge for us. We applied for a grant a few years ago, but we're not successful with that about recycling education and outreach. We're committed to doing that, but that's the real crux of it, to change hearts and minds, because that's how we change behavior. So couldn't agree more and appreciate your comments. We'll definitely work on that.
Appreciate that. Last thing I'll say is, I will give a big shout out that the women and men, at least the ones that we were with on sanitation run, they were like really clear. Like when we would find bags that were mixed refuse that had a bunch of trash in there, they were like, nope, leave that behind, we're not doing that. And they had like a whole system for it. So I think on the like frontline worker level, there is an appreciation that recycling means recycling, it does not mean you're trash. And I just appreciated like seeing them do that, like, you know, because I like picked up a bag and they were like, nope, put it down, that's not going in there. So I do think that the frontline workers get it. I think we got to just message it a little stronger.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm going to open the floor for questions. We're going to go to the Vice Chair, Chair, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate, first, all the great work that you guys have been doing. I know this has been a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of confusion work. And, you know, I've sat through in a number of meetings with you guys to think about how we begin to tackle this. So I want to acknowledge some of the progress that we've made. I also, I think we need to appreciate that there's been a sort of relative backsliding. And I think, I was looking at the residential diversion rate from 2017 to 2024. We noted that the diversion rate went from 18 to 16%, and that was primarily because of an increase in trash? Just, we got more trash now. So I had a number of thoughts here about how we're reporting this, how often, you know, people are aware of what's actually happening, how we measure our progress. I would, is this available online? Do we, for instance, report regularly, publicly, our progress here?
In regards to the Less Waste, Better Baltimore plan, we have not come up with like a formal tracking process, but these numbers are published. Every year, we submit these numbers to the state as part of the Maryland Recycling Act reporting, and then they release the, I think it's called the Solid Waste, the Waste Managed in Maryland Report, which will, you know, it includes all of these numbers and more. So we do, I mean, we are reporting these numbers, but not specifically tied to Less Waste, Better Baltimore.
Sure. Yeah, I think this is actually really, really helpful for me to see it broken out this way. I'm glad you put this together. And my thought here is, I mean, of course, I'd love to see the number be higher in 2024, but even the fact that we're tracking it, we know what direction things are going, I think is really, really helpful for us to find ways to improve. And looking at the different types of waste and how it ends up can tell us where to focus our efforts. And that's my thought here. I don't want to beat you guys up about a 2% decline as much as I do want to think about how constant knowledge of our progress and regular check-ins on this data can help us think on our feet about how to address some of the concerns we're seeing. I was able to go out with the Council President and a couple of the council members on the recycling route. Very true, we saw it all in the recycling bins. And when I say all, we saw it all. To that effect, I think there's a lot that we can do around education, there's a lot that we can do around, and not just broad citywide education. I think what I saw was in certain neighborhoods, very small, you know, four-block radiuses, for instance, just different, a different familiarity with how to recycle. Plastic bags and their recycling, or just not even recyclable things and their recycling. And some of that may be education, some of that may be folks just, they don't care as much. But nevertheless, I think our strategy has got to be different. And I think there's something to be gained potentially by having this available or projected on our social media. This week, you know, we recycled this much percentage more than we did last week, but keeping some sort of progress along the way so that we don't look at this every two years or the gap between 2017 and 2024, and we're comparing this large gap, and there's no learning in between those time periods. Not to say there's no learning, I think we've learned a lot. So it's just a thought, as I was looking at this chart, it was really helpful for me. Another thought that I had, do we have a timeline for implementation of the Less Waste, Better Baltimore plan?
So it is, that's the real question here in terms of resources, in terms of funding, in terms of, you know, how we plan and go about doing that. We're obviously under a time crunch because of the incinerator contract and our landfill expansion. It is urgent that we need to find ways to. It is urgent that we need to find ways to get to this point and implement these, these, these priorities. One of the things I will also note is when Less Waste Better Baltimore came out in 2019, that was before the pandemic and before our contraction of the recycling services, which I will admit, we did step back a little bit with, because of that, obviously if we're not collecting as much recycling, that's not going to be as much diversion, which set us back a little bit for us to shore up our operations. But it is something that we need to, to really focus on, an actual timeline for all of this stuff. We haven't fully worked it out, we're working with the Planning Department on looking at various capital projects. Our facilities have been our priority right now, compost facility, Bowley's Lane Expansion for the East Side Transfer Station as well as our other areas, those are in the works, they're funded in the CIP and we have a plan for that. Some of the larger and strategic considerations like what do we do with the waste?
Can I ask a more pointed question?
Absolutely.
Because I, I think it's, having goals without a timeline means you don't have goals. It's a nice theory, but we are not working toward getting there at some point. And even if we miss that point, we can miss that point by five years, we set a goal and we started to work toward that. And I think this plan has been out there for quite some time, we've made some progress on it, but I would suggest that that slide that we've seen at 2% means that we're not making progress fast enough to counteract the amount of trash that we're producing. So my pointed question to this, what is our current capacity of our landfill and when do we expect that to cap off?
So I'm gonna ask Chief Antoine Byrd to answer that, but I will say a caveat is it does depend on what is going in the landfill.
Recycling. Yeah.
The, the incinerator, it, it is ash, much smaller volume. The life cycle is a lot longer with that, if there is no incinerator, it obviously decreases exponentially. But if we can reduce what goes in there, that obviously prolongs it as well. Chief Byrd, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Antoine Byrd, Chief of Disposal Services for Department of Public Works. So the current capacity for quarantined rural landfill is right now four years. The expansion is expected to start its first construction phase, is said to be bided out later this summer. So with the expectation of that brand new cell for the expansion to be opened by 2029.
So we're gonna expand it and we plan to expand it?
Yeah, we are going to expand it.
And how much would that expansion add by way of life, lifeline for roughly?
So life is relative, right, on how much you bring into it? So the expansion is going to give us 5.7 million cubic, cubic yards, so call it three and a half million tons. I mean, if we're bringing in 300,000 tons, it's only going to give us 10 years. But if we can find a way to reduce that, then it extends out. But overall, the way we're basing it on is the expectation that we'll get somewhere around 10 to 14 years out of that.
Okay, so to summarize what I'm hearing, we have four years left on the current landfill. We already have plans to expand that landfill, which will give us roughly 10 years. And then the other thing to keep into consideration, our other hard timeline is our, our contract with the Wheel of Brader, which expires, I believe, in 2030 or 2031.
Yes, sir.
Which of course is a big part of how we're able to extend the life of that landfill. If we end up not extending our contract with the Wheel of Brader, we're gonna burn through that landfill infinitely faster. So to my initial question around what is our, like we all understand this is urgent, we all understand we need to do this work, but putting a timeline to the installation, to the implementation of the Less Waste Better Baltimore Plan, and I would say even more aggressive, a zero waste plan as this hearing is called together, that's our timeline. Our timeline is 2030, maybe a couple of years thereafter. And I, I think that's what we should be keeping in mind. I think otherwise, we're gonna end up flying by the seat of our pants trying to figure out what to do with our waste in 2030 and even more when our landfill fills up. So I just, I urge us to, to be strategic here because, oh, last question and Madam Chair, I'll hand it off. What does it cost us, what does that expansion cost us?
So right now, the budget for the expansion is 100 million.
I'm sorry?
100 million.
$100 million.
But we've been putting money aside for many, many years into that, into a landfill trust to help fund this, but it is extremely expensive.
Yeah, so I, I think when we, this is my thing, $100 million for 10 years of trash.
Yes, sir.
I will recycle anything I possibly can for $100 million. So I think there's, there's a huge incentive here for us to be very, very aggressive because we're gonna, 10 years will come and it will go and we're gonna be looking at 150 or 200 million as land gets more expensive and opportunities to, to do this work, to, to put our waste into a landfill gets more expensive. So I just, I urge us to take this very seriously. We can easily burn through cash and really miss an opportunity here to be forward-thinking and proactive. So I appreciate you guys and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. I'm actually gonna make it into an official committee request. I think that, you know, just by your dialogue and your sense of urgency, putting those pieces together, I think would be a great opportunity for the committee members to have that type of timeline so that at each of the legislative oversight hearings, we are asking you kind of where we are in the implementation and if there are additional conversations that need to be had during the upcoming budget season, for the next few budget seasons, we have a guiding, we have a guiding light and North Star in order for us to kind of ask those proper questions amongst our colleagues and said administration as well. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Chair, Chair, not Chairwoman, Councilwoman Ramos. Everybody's the chair today.
I got to be chair for a second yesterday, so. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions, well, I've got many, but I'll just start with this. The, going back to my colleague's point about, both colleagues' point about this marketing thing, I would love to have the recycling percentage by district. We are good at competing against each other to try to say like, I'm gonna be, you know, we can do this, especially my colleague and I from the fourth. So, you know, I think it would be very interesting for us, I think we can help you by saying like, look, our recycling percentage is only this, that, the other, we're gonna help with whatever messaging that you have. I think that that would be super interesting, so if you can do it by then, which I can imagine you can.
I will, we'll look, definitely, I think it's a great idea, we'll look into that, see what we can, we can come up with.
Yeah, okay, great.
And ma'am, is that an official committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. And I'm all for a, a field trip also. I guess I just want to emphasize that what you're hearing from us is that we really want to ramp up this work. And I'm working on two particular zero waste initiatives and I'm sorry it's taking me so long, but I'm trying to do this right. Deconstruction, which is a good percentage of our waste in the incinerator, is construction waste, it's also a good percentage of our legal dumping. And also some form of bottle something, it may not be a deposit, it may be something else, but we're trying to figure it out because the state bill continues to not pass and so we cannot wait for that anymore. And so I guess I'm, I'm seeing what you've got in these plans and feel like we should really accelerate this work and not necessarily wait for us, that the mayor's office should be saying like, wait, we're gonna do this, that, the other for zero waste in a much more, you know, emphasized fashion. I mean, obviously the recycling carts were important, they were delivered in the middle of a snowstorm in my district, that was pretty amazing. So, but I think we just need to do more and I think you're hearing that from us. So I look forward to working with you on these two bills that I expect to introduce sometime this year and, you know, work through how that's all, how that's all gonna work because it's gonna take, it's really gonna take all of us. And it may be a materials recovering facility, you know, to do that. So just to have a comment from my colleagues here about, you know, the sort of what you're hearing from us in terms of getting this, this stuff done fairly quickly.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Ramos. If I could just add to that or kind of like put out there, again, I do want to emphasize the role that the state of Maryland plays, the Maryland Department of the Environment, from a regulatory perspective in so much of this work, as they are the implementers of many of our statewide waste policies. And I think it would be very insightful for this committee to perhaps have MDE come and share some of their progress and I think they would also be insightful in terms of helping to determine or kind of like share some ideas on legislative strategies as well.
Thank you, Council, Councilwoman. I, I think thanks to you all in the council, the last couple of years have really been critical in shoring up our essential services, the, the routine services, which really came under a spotlight just because of all the pressure and all that we have to do. That's taken honestly the bulk of our focus and our resources the last couple of years. I think I would agree, we would all agree that we are in a very, very good place with that, have more crews, thanks to the work from this council and the administration as well as other resources. I think that this is something that we can now really start looking at and moving forward with because our, our sort of foundational level services are really getting shored up, are in a, are in a much better place than they were.
Thank you. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just gonna go back old school. I used to be an employee with Clean and Green in Baltimore, this is just basics in terms of education. So what I would like to see from the administration as well as DPW, how many educators do you have that actually go to schools and communities and help people with understanding of the importance of recycling? When I was with Clean and Green Baltimore, there were three people that went to schools, community meetings and literally had a clear sticker of everything that it's recyclable, put it on the side of the recycling bin so people knew how to do it, even teaching them how to clean it so it was not so, it was not disposed of in the landfill. So I think I would like to see a commitment to ease, to see how many positions you have and a commitment to see how many positions you can add because at this point, even with witnessing the recycling carts in my district, people are still dumping trash in them, right? That is an education issue that if we go door to door and talk to people, we can solve and it helps us all in diverse trash. The next request I'll have as well is looking at, we have a number of people because of the crisis in terms of eviction that we still have, I think that we need to go back to figuring out how we can store their actual furniture and belongings too, that allows us to reuse them because we keep going around and around with these things being put into our landfills. If we're able to house them somewhere and if they're not able to reclaim them, maybe we can give them to nonprofits, that can give them to other families. I think we need to think that through and I would like a meeting to discuss that in detail because that is another waste diversion topic that we can actually do and we did it before. So I just want to get back to what we did, did well before and that we can do it again. That's it, I don't have any questions.
Thank you so much, Councilman Torrance. Councilman Dorsey?
I'm glad to see that we've, so on the, this slide, organics, we sent 42 tons to PG, this is Prince George's County compost, this is a, I guess the result of some work that we did last year to, just say, we shouldn't be sending all of our yard waste, especially to the landfill because it's prohibited by city law. And it's crazy to be sending sticks to the incinerator when they're just organic material and are gathered easily as sticks or tree trunks or leaves. When did we get the first tonnage to PG?
Did you say when?
Yes.
It would, I believe it would have been when our food scrap drop-off locations first started. So that was in 2019, I believe? We have food scrap drop-off locations at all of DPW's residential recycling centers where residents can bring it and drop it off in, I believe.
Are you sure of this? Because when I brought the idea of sending organics to Prince George's County for composting last year, it was a, it was as if DPW had never, ever considered the possibility of this previously.
Well, so maybe the confusion lies in that DPW is not taking it directly. We work with a company who was contracted to collect from those drop-off locations and they take it to PG County, so we're not directly transporting those materials ourselves. Perhaps that distinction is helpful.
And then I'll just add, for the farmer's market-based food scrap collection, we work with local farmers, one feeds the food scraps. Yep, to their hogs and then the other takes it back to their farm for composting. And we, I don't believe those numbers are reflected in the 42 tons.
Yeah. DPW told me last year that we were gonna begin, so you're telling me that this 42 is only food waste, organic drop-offs from our solid waste drop-off sites, not any other form of yard waste? DPW told me last year that quarter one this year, we would be ready to start sending other yard waste to PG or to some other?
Yeah, so we did discuss diverting yard waste and I believe that, that commitment was contingent on the funding, which we did put in the request to separate out yard waste collections. If you recall, separating out yard waste collections from our routine services would require additional fleet and staffing because we would, we wouldn't be able to reduce routine services routes. We would, we would need additional routes and crews to, to be able to separate out that yard waste.
Are we doing nothing else to advance this issue of yard waste diversion except for just waiting on funds?
Yes, we are, we, it is something that we're looking to prioritize. We were, had worked up a plan and it's, it's something that we're working in as part of the composting phase one that we're looking to, to expand as well. But are you, you're talking about a specific thing at the landfill, I don't, I don't think I was involved in that conversation.
We are going to spend taxpayer dollars this year to collect leaves come fall and Christmas tree trunks come winter. We're going to spend taxpayer dollars to collect that stuff. But if we do nothing else to prepare for any other form of diversion, we're going to spend that taxpayer money to go and collect this stuff from people and then burn it, when we could be going and collecting it and not burning it. Are we doing nothing else right now to make that change?
I believe that, you know, we do need additional resources in, in order to be able to divert this material. I can just go through some of the costs, the one-time cost for yard waste diversion in year one are $1.7 million.
What is the cost that we're gonna spend to dispose of that stuff anyway?
Are you talking about the?
We're going to spend the taxpayer dollars to collect it and dispose of it. You're giving me a figure for how we were going to dispose of it differently, but not a figure for how we're going to dispose of it currently anyway.
Right, so right now it's collected with mixed refuse.
We spend money to do that.
Right, and we can't reduce the cost of mixed refuse collection because we still, we still need to maintain the number of routes and collection stops for mixed refuse. So we can't, we're not gonna see like a shift in cost if we wanted to add a separate collection for yard waste, it would have to be a new line item.
One second, let him finish his thought first. Go ahead.
And so we're doing nothing except for just waiting on money that we don't have programmed yet?
So Councilman Tyler Chanel, Madam Chair, Government Relations, I, I think that what you're hearing from DPW is that there's still some work that needs to be done here, right? And we can follow up offline, have a conversation about what that looks like and what needs to happen going forward. I, I certainly think that that's probably something that needs to be flagged for the city administrator and for her and her team to look into what we can do to be moving quicker on this. But separately, we do have to be realistic about the resources that we have and we do not want to see a reduction in the routine services that we provide. And so we would need to look into what this additional service will look like and there is a cost associated with it, right? And I, I think that folks are very clear where we stand right now financially. And so, like I said, happy to have a conversation with you offline with DPW and the city administrator to discuss next steps on that.
Is that an official committee request, sir?
I don't know what I would ask for, I've already had, I've already had the conversation with the city administrator. I had all this conversation last year and that, so I'm just confirming here that no progress is being made right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman and Tyler. Let's make sure we get a, just a update sent to the committee, I'll add that as an official committee request as well. Thank you. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up directly on these lines, so we're talking, as Councilman Dorsey was asking about, there's the cost to collect itself, right? Which requires additional effort. effort. I mean, we're currently paying for it, right? So there would be reduced tonnage. So yes, you have to hire new crews and go out, or at least send crews out more regularly to specifically pick up yard waste. The tonnage, or the difficulty of currently picking up waste would be a little bit less, so maybe the current crews move a little faster, because they don't have to pick up all these Christmas trees, or the yard, the leaves and stuff, right? So there is, it might not cost less, but it might make the job easier. But specifically though, aside from the collection cost, there's the tipping fees for taking this to burn it at Resco, and that would be a direct drop. But if we were taking them somewhere else, right, that would be a, so like, right now, approximately 2.3 million in tipping fees just to burn yard waste in 2025 is in order, right? So aside from the cost of collection, there's also the cost that we are, we're not only paying the people to pick it up, we are paying to have it burned, right? And so if we took it somewhere else, we would not be paying it to have it burned. And so that seems like it would come into the calculation of what the net cost of implementing a yard waste pickup and diversion strategy would be. Any comments on that side of it?
So yeah, I mean, in the long term, we could see some cost diversion in terms of tipping fees, but in the short term, we want to be mindful that this will require a change in behavior from the residents' end to shift what they're doing now and participate in a new program. And usually when you introduce new curbside collection programs, it takes time for people to adopt it, to change over, right? So we don't want to have any yard waste, separate yard waste collection budget be premised on a tipping fee savings from disposal, because we don't know in reality what that's gonna look like in terms of behavior change and how people are participating. But we will, you could see a marginal savings in tipping fees, but it does not cover the cost of separate collections.
Oh, I didn't say that would cover the cost, but, but it is part of the equation. I mean, the conversation so far had acted like it just wasn't a thing at all. I mean, we are, and so just to note, kind of for the public conversation, we are actively paying to burn it, and every ton that we don't take to Resco, but we divert, is we are saving money, right, in that regard. I would say, granted that it takes a while for behavior to change, things like that, but there's lots of municipalities all around the country that have separate yard waste collections, and we could look at their historic records and get a pretty good sense, I would think, projecting financially, about how long it takes to learn this new habit, and also what the adoption percentage might be. I mean, you know, I think, I would encourage us to be conservative on that, but it's not, it's not a mystery, right? This is something that happens, and we can learn from it.
Right. We've looked through it, and we've, the first years that we've budgeted for collection is for a 15% capture rate. And so we also have budgeted for how many additional vehicles we would need if that capture rate goes up. I would caution to say that diversion is going to save money, while the tipping fee for diversion avenues is typically lower than disposal, it can be lower than disposal, not always. It won't necessarily save us money when you factor in the whole soup to nuts of separate collection and then disposal. So I just want to, like, you know, caution how we, how we frame that.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that. You just mentioned 15% and a projection. Looking forward budget-wise, a separate collection of and composting of yard waste, is that reflected in the FY26 budget? Or are there plans for it to be reflected at some point in time? I mean, at what point are we building this in to start, to start these, these yard waste collection efforts?
It was requested via the enhancement process last year, but it will not, as far as I know, it was not included in the FY26 budget.
What was the size of that request, and what was the scope of the project entailed by it?
15% capture rate?
No, no, I mean, was it, was it meant to be like a pilot program in a certain area? And, and, I know the, I know the 15%, but you asked for how much money to, to do what in that enhancement?
We, we can follow up on the enhancement request. So Madam Chair, if that can come in as a formal request, we can follow up on it.
Perfect. And so just to make sure that I'm clear, Councilman, can you reiterate your request for sure?
Yes, I, so there was, there was a mention made by DPW staff that an enhancement request was made for FY25? I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, or for FY26?
FY26, right? If it was November?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay.
We can follow, yeah.
So there was an enhancement request made related to yard waste collection for FY26, and I'm asking on behalf of the committee, I'm hoping the committee will request information about how much was requested and what was supposed to be accomplished by that, like how large a program, and just any of the details around that request.
Happy to work with you, yeah.
Sure. And let's say in two weeks? Is that good? Okay, great. Thank you so much, Councilman.
I did have a separate thing on the composting side on the, at Bullies Lane.
Okay, last question.
Great, I really appreciate it. So if I recall, it wasn't in the slide in detail, but you were, you were good about giving the details in the presentation, so I want to make sure I heard it correctly. In terms of the improvements at Bullies Lane, the, the first priority of phase one, or whatever the framing was, is this solar composting facility specifically for yard waste, and then second phase was food scrap? Is that what I, okay. I know that there is, we have the EPA grants, but then there's also, this year's capital budget has 21 million in go-bonds for the transfer station overall, and another 42 million in fiscal year 31. How much of that funding, in addition to the EPA funding, is tied into the build-out of the compost facility?
We have $1 million in capital improvement funds in addition to the EPA fund for the composting facility development at this time.
So five total?
Five million, yes, sir.
Great. And then what's the projected tonnage capacity of the, of the compost facility when it comes online? So give me timeline, and what's the tonnage capacity when it's, when it's operational?
Sure, so we're hoping with the current level of funding, we can build the composting facility out to 50% site capacity, which we're estimating is about 12 and 1/2 thousand tons per year. So that's, and then the full site capacity will be hopefully around 24,000, 25,000 tons per year. And then in terms of development timeline, we're expecting completed designs by end of '25, we'll bid for construction beginning of '26, and hopefully have the facility completed by end of '27.
And that's to the 12 and 1/2 thousand and 50%?
Mm-hmm.
That's what we have the money for right now, and that's the timeline for that capacity?
Correct.
Thank you so much.
And one thing I will also add is, correct me if I'm wrong, Sophia, but there's a lot of space at this site for the potential for growth and expansion of this facility, and we're making sure that that's included in the design as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Councilman. I did have a question, so I want to go back to kind of the contractual nature of DPW. So in 2020, negotiations for the current Resco contract eliminated the pay, the put-or-pay clause, allowing flexibility in the waste tonnage delivered without penalties. Can you all speak to how the city has taken full advantage of that opportunity? One of the, one of the concerns that I have, and this is something kind of definition, definition rise with the circular economy, it's insinuating that we are circulating what's currently in the, in the stream now. What we need to be talking about is also removing some of those items from the stream now. We want to make sure that we have some sort of deficit there. So can you all speak to that, how you all have taken advantage of those contractual obligations, and also the negotiations with wind waste?
I can take the first part. So I, I can exactly speak to the negotiations part, but I can tell you how we've been taking advantage of the, you know, the lack of the put-or-pay contract. In the last year, we have implemented two, two new waste diversion streams. So we introduced mattress recycling and also textile recycling. The flexibility now allows that we can divert as much as we want to, and so we, it will take time to phase in additional diversion programs, but that's kind of the approach we're taking now. We can divert as much as we possibly can through other streams.
Sure, and so thank you so much for that explanation. What I'm really looking for is a quantifiable amount of what we have, what we have diverted. I appreciate the mattress diversion that's really, really big in my district, so I really appreciate that. But looking for some sort of quantifiable number based on the contractual negotiations that you all had with Resco.
Certainly. Do you have that? Can we get that?
I don't have it on me. I can look into how we can quantify that for you.
Okay. Yeah, that would be totally fine. And if I can just make that an official committee request, and for the public's knowledge, the reason why I'm asking that question is because historically, there have been conversations within the city about how the amount of tonnage that we deliver to Resco is, is tied to our funding, and it, and it has been, you know, historically it has been. And so I want to provide clarity and also empowerment to the community that we are actively taking steps in order for us to not only divert that waste, but also take as much that we can from that incinerator, and that it is written within our contracts since 2020 and moving forward as well. All right, thank you. Councilman Torrance, you have one last question to round us out before public testimony?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had another question. I know with waste diversion, especially now, PG is making money off of their compost facility. I would like to make a committee request to talk about when and where are we in developing upon compost facility, especially since we're about to spend $100 million on, on trash? I think, I think about it because one of the primary, like, sources of their sold composting is Miracle Growth, right? If they're able to take a facility and build it in seven years, make a turn of profit, I think we need to figure out how to do it ourselves. That way, we can create a new enterprise system that allows us to do waste diversion in a larger scale. So I just want to make sure that we, we're having that conversation, but also how do we build our own facility, so that we're not just shipping it down the road and just putting more money into someone else's coffers?
Yes, sir. We are constructing a compost facility now at the Bullies Lane facility. Design is expected to be completed in fiscal '25, at the end of '25, calendar '25, excuse me, and then we'll be looking at construction. The first phase is gonna be the yard waste, right? Yeah, yard waste. eventual phase will be into food and food scraps and other waste, so we are working actively on that. But your point is very well taken, making sure that we can take advantage of this and make it profitable.
If I could just add one more comment to that, there is, I mean, you raise a great point, and I just want to bring in like a policy lens to it as well. In the state of Maryland, there is HP264, which is a large-scale food waste diversion mandate, which requires any large-scale food waste generator to divert their food waste if there's a facility with capacity within 30 miles. And so that presents a business opportunity. Traditionally, DPW is managing residential waste, right? So we're sizing our facilities to manage residential tonnages, but, and, and to expand beyond that scope into the commercial sector and build it out into a business opportunity is a great idea, and I think it's one that we're definitely considering internally.
If I can add to that, to what Sophia said, I think it's also important to keep in mind, for the profit that PG County turns, that is likely from revenue from their tipping fees in addition to selling their finished product. And yeah, like you said, you know, it took time to get there, but I, I think sometimes we also have to acknowledge that sometimes initially it really is a policy decision, it's not necessarily always gonna be revenue, but there are definitely other legislative and policy kind of strategies we can take, looking at the broader scope of our waste stream to figure out how we can support new revenue streams to help fund some of these other priorities.
And, and Councilman, you're, you're exactly right. One of the major initiatives that I know I've been talking about with the hospital institutions is how we can, you know, divert their, their food waste every single year. And so that's a, another area that, that we can explore together, and, and it's something that I know that they are concerned about as well, but, you know, that will provide an opportunity for us in the city to provide some sort of direction related to a policy decision. So you're exactly spot on.
Yeah, I totally agree, because I think about other counties who have done P3s for this, where they franchise a portion of it to a private contractor, and they just take about 40% of it, but they allow, they were able to do it without putting the burden on their traditional collections. So I think that like, we gotta be innovative, because I like clean air, I like being able to drink clean drinking water, I like to make sure that streets are clean and people are not seeing illegal dumping. I also recognize that plants grow better when we have composting, right? I think we can do this, but I think it is not only a policy shift that we need, but it's also, it's, it's where we are. There, we're in a climate crisis, right? And we so happen to live in a city below sea level, so we gotta figure out how to do this, but when the mindset is that while everyone else is not thinking about it, we need to at least do our part to protect us. So I appreciate you, and I look forward to the meeting.
Thank you so much, Councilman Torrance. Councilman Conway?
I have requests, I don't know how reasonable this is. One of the things that I was thinking of in a similar planning scenario is with the police department, and how they track their implementation of the consent decree. And essentially what they do is they go line by, paragraph by paragraph, line by line, to see whether or not they've completed said thing that they were supposed to complete for the consent decree. And what that allows us to do is see our progress along the way. I'm curious if we could pull something together like that for the less waste, Better Baltimore Plan, so that as we're looking at those next steps and the things that we need to accomplish, understanding their costs, and understanding how difficult that is, is something that'd be helpful for us to understand. Because I, I can tell you right now, I've looked through the plan, and the plan has a lot of information in it, but I can't, I can't quite put my finger on where we are in the plan. Because I know we've, we've done a lot of the community outreach, we've done some of the tweaks in our waste streams, you know, we've put out our new recycling bins and things like that, but how far are we along? Are we 70% of the way there, or are we 20% of the way there? I can't really answer that question, but it would help, I don't know how difficult that is to pull together, but I'd be interested in it.
Yeah, and, and Madam Chair, I think that the, I think that what we, what we can commit to is looking at what type of tracking-
Yeah, public-facing-
That we can, that we could implement to make it clear to residents where we are and the progress that we're making towards full implementation.
I love that. And, and that's something that not only we can help through these legislative oversight hearings to kind of gather that information, but also, like you were saying, sharing it with our, our districts as well, I think would be very, 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 very good, and a good opportunity. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And now we're gonna move into public testimony. So we have a, I believe we have a few people that, oh, just one person that wanted to testify today. So Brad Rogers from the South Baltimore Gateway Partnership?
There we are, great. Thank you. Hello, I'm Brad Rogers. I'm the Executive Director of the South Baltimore Gateway Partnership, and I first want to express my appreciation for the hard-working teams from DPW and Sustainability who are here. They're dealing with these complex questions every day, and I want them to know I appreciate it, and I'm speaking as a non-expert, just trying to be helpful. Like anything worth doing, getting to zero waste is hard and will take time, and there's gonna be a transition period. And in my comments today, I want to focus on an important component of this transition period, not being so reliant on incineration as you're making the transition towards increasing diversion. The reasons why we're so dependent on incineration are obvious, and as Councilman Conway's questions made clear earlier, we have limited landfill capacity, and incineration helps us to dramatically expand this life. So we have a profound incentive to burn everything we can't divert. And the choices of either filling up our landfill immediately or maximizing incineration and having the neighborhoods, particularly of South Baltimore, incur that burden are really poor choices. We desperately need a third path that reduces our dependence on incineration while preserving local landfill space, which means that we have to, while we're working to expand diversion, we need the ability to take our trash somewhere else, which is to say, to do long-haul transfer to more distant landfills while we're working to maximize diversion. And I would love to say that I am super smart for thinking of that all by myself, but this is actually a key element of our 10-year solid waste management plan, which was adopted last year, specifically Section 5.5.3, calls for us to develop a long-haul disposal plan to reduce dependence on wind waste and preserve space at Quarantine Road landfill. Just what it says there on the PDF. The plan says that to achieve this, we'll need to create a regional transfer station where transfer operations can be consolidated and provided much more efficiently than scattered all over different parts of the city. And this would ideally be in a place where waste could be transferred both by truck and by rail. And what the plan says is, with the Quarantine Road landfill expected to reach full capacity in 2035, and the city's contract with wind waste set to expire in 2031, a regional transfer station would provide the city with a long-term method to manage its solid waste. So there's two ways for us to go about doing this. There's probably many more that if I were educated on this, I would know, but they're really two big categories. The first is to have the city build one out of pocket, which is incredibly expensive and difficult. The second is to ask the private sector to build one for us in exchange for the contracts to provide that long-hauling service. And I believe that in this year, right now, we could at least ask the private sector if they would be willing to provide this. We could set the parameters of what we were looking for and be in control of what offers, responses came back to us, and even throw in other goals, like requiring it to not be located near existing residences, or perhaps asking for help supporting our composting or other diversion activities. And I believe it's actionable, realistic, pragmatic, and implementable right now, and if- And if we found a partner who was able to do that for us, we could have the regional transfer station operational by the time our wind waste contract renews. And for the first time, that would put us as a city in control of how much incineration we actually want to do and how long we would want to keep that contract in place. I understand it's a very complex question of unwinding that relationship. But we would no longer be beholden to incineration. We would be in the driver's seat, making active choices about what was best for us. And I think that is worth doing and something we could accomplish right now to position us to be five years from now in a much stronger place. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brad. And Directors, I, thank you so much. I just, I'm so sorry I didn't acknowledge you. But I would love if there can be some sort of conversation with the South Baltimore Gateway Partnership with that as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to add.
Sure, yes, sir.
Khalil Zay, Director of Public Works, I apologize for being late to start with, but it's, it's, I would just wanted to, the conversation is going on right now to what the, Mr. Rogers had mentioned. And we're, we're looking for options. We're looking at things from that perspective. We have some, some vendors that came and approached us about this. We're trying, and Sophia can talk to that, trying to find what is our best position that we could have to maximize what we can get out of this as a city. So the more knowledge we have on the hauling option, the more we will be able to say, hey, we're looking for this and we're looking for that, so we'll have the best product out of it. The people, the people that came to us and talked to us about it already, they have, came up with options with guaranteed amount. You know, we, we want to have that on the table as anything else that we, we talk about. But these conversations are, are ongoing at this point.
Great.
You want to add anything else?
I would love it. Our next legislative oversight hearing to kind of delve into that. That would be one of my, you know, just one of my requests, that we talk about that a little bit more at the next legislative oversight hearing. All right, and I believe we have some virtual, virtual testimony as well? Oh, if you have virtual testimony, if you can raise your hand? I believe we have one.
Oh, am I with you?
Oh, yes. Is that Jennifer?
Right, yes. Hello. Yes, Jennifer Kinsey with Clean Water Action, District 13 resident. Thank you all so much for this really important hearing. I hope it'll be the first of many. And I think this hearing really brought up a lot of issues and concerns where we have made, as the council has already discussed, we have made progress with increasing, especially organics diversion. The actual percent, we are also sending more waste to Resco than ever before by a really significant amount, which is very concerning if you look at that difference between the 2017 and 2024 numbers going to Resco. And we have a lot more to do. And I'm really concerned from what we're hearing about the budget, about the Scott administration, Mayor Scott's administration having chosen not to prioritize some of the lowest possible hanging fruit of starting yards, yard waste collection and composting this year as, you know, the council had a hearing about that topic last July, last summer. And the department and the administration made some very strong statements about this being a priority and about moving it forward, even though Councilman Dorsey's bill at the time did not advance. And now to hear that DPW made that budget request for a much smaller amount of funding that would be, than would be involved in building a long-haul rail transfer station, which would be a huge capital investment. And to hear that DPW made that budget request in November to start that program this year and had it denied by the administration is honestly really disturbing about Mayor Scott's commitment to his promise made back in 2020 to make this current contract with Resco our last. And so that's something I'd like to see the Scott administration fix. That's something I'd like to see the city council fix in the next couple of months because it will take time to ramp up the tonnage diverted of organic waste, yard waste, organic food waste. But if we don't start this year, if we kick the can down the road another couple of years by not making that budget investment now, how much later are, is it going to be before we actually get to 100%? Will it be after 2031? Where will we be when the next mayor and the next council has to grapple with that next decision about extending the Resco contract or not? So really want to express that concern and urge the council to act on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. And I really appreciate your commitment, your longstanding commitment on this issue. I know that there's, that, that's something that we're grappling with in the committee. We're trying to balance prioritization, but we're also trying to balance, you know, current funding streams as well. So I know that each and every person on this committee, including myself, we, we understand the urgency of what you just described. And I think that through this, through the series of these legislative oversight hearings or upcoming budget hearings, you'll hear quite a few of us talking about funding related, not just to the workers within DPW, but some of the systemic nature that you are discussing related to composting, related to just overall infrastructure, capital improvements within many of our facilities in DPW. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, this concludes public testimony. Given that this is a legislative oversight hearing, we, for the public's knowledge, we won't have a vote on this matter, but we are in recess, we are in recess currently. And thank you so much for being here today. Have a good day.